All right, if you want to start with our quarter four goals.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council members, if you'll look in your vision 2025 Q4 goals. Again, most of these are transitioning into first or second quarter items. Wastewater treatment plan upgrades, tap project, onboarding plan. All of those are shifted to 2026. At our next meeting, we plan to have quarterly updates on customer service and nuisance properties. And then tonight, you're going to consider some mitigation on nuisance properties or dangerous buildings. That's on the agenda for tonight. A-trip project on Shellfield Road, there are three lights that have been installed. I think one of them was damaged in shipping. And so if you go up there to that A-trip project now, you'll see three directions. There's lights in one direction, there's not. They've got that reordered now to replace it.
Lay down their gun, it all blocked off right now.
Yeah, I couldn't get here that way.
Same.
So that's why. Let's see, the old Coppinville Agreement, again, that's last meeting. You authorized the mayor's office to work with Enterprise City Schools on the final language of that. And then I added Strategic Planning Meeting, just to reemphasize to the council. I know it's coming up on the holiday season, but that's when we set that date, January 14th. Just wanted to make sure that was still good with you all.
What's the time?
It probably, typically it has started around 9:00 a.m. Does that still work for everybody? Try to get out of there by 2:30, 3 o'clock. And if you're still okay with it, having the group that we had last year with Neil Wade and Brian Parker as our outside consultant to come in and run the meeting. They are available on that day. So any objection to reaching out to them?
I don't have any.
Okay. One other thing that I wanted to bring up. Chief Moore had an addition that he wanted to make to the E-911 Board meeting agenda. And so if he could come up here and kind of tell you guys a little bit about that, I'd like to give up some time for him to do that.
Okay.
Good afternoon. So real quickly, I'm going to kind of tell you what it's about. And I'm going to let Tanji go and Clarissa go into a little bit more detail if they choose. But Prepared is a company through Axon. And what they do is they monitor the 911 calls when they come in. They include real-time transcription and also translation. Where the officer or the communications officer, she has a question or he has a question, they could type it out and it sends to the person in their own language. It speeds up everything. It also does, it uses AI to further ask questions that, you know, perhaps we don't deal with on a daily basis, but it uses AI and then transcriptions to talk back and forth to the individual. It's a three-year contract. It's already, it's funded through 911, E-911. But what else am I missing?
I can talk a minute on Prepared. It has the full support of the other southeast Alabama 911 centers already. They have already entered into a contract and have been using this roughly for, since the beginning of this year. As Chief Moore mentioned, it does translations for us, which would take the place of buoyance. It is able to speak back to the caller in 20 different languages and translate up to 227. On top of that, it also provides at least its two programs. One at a cost of 20 cents a call and the other at a cost of 50 cents a call. But we get roughly six to seven different amenities to use, including exporting full summary of each call that comes in to our administrative staff. So if we were to get a call, say for a shooting incident at the local Walmart, our chief of police could be notified as soon as the call is over of exactly what took place during that call, a full summary report, and he could be on his way to respond. So there's several different amenities for the single cost. Our permission is really for to enter into the contract. And as I stated, it does have the full support of the other southeast Alabama 911 centers, such as Dothan, Houston County, even Coffee County already use this product. The first tier of it was purchased by the Alabama 911 Board. And it also assists us in our first responder complacency that we have to meet of 7% to 10% quality assurance done for each call that comes in. Currently, we maybe do 1% to 2%, and that's really due to manpower and the things that we have to do. And this program does it for us automatically for every 911 call at the same cost.
What's the name of the program again?
It's called Prepared.
Prepared.
May I also, can I approach and give you a handout?
They already have one. Email to my thing.
Okay. You say you emailed it, Chief?
No. Don't know, yeah, but go ahead.
Who did you say was, was this a budgeted item or is this paid for by?
It's paid through the E-911 funds that we have to cover.
It's a yearly contract that you will be entering in?
Yes, ma'am. It's a three-year contract.
Three-year, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You'll notice there's also a one-time cost for the hardware equipment that goes in the server room. That can be divided into the three years or put off into the second year, whichever would help with us budgeting.
So you said you already had the funds budgeted for this?
We already have the funds in the budget this past year, this year.
For this?
Physical year 2026.
So just a clarification on this. Part of this sounds like it is specifically for non-English speaking?
Yes, it, as part of the assisted call-taking, it provides a, the transcription service, which types out what the caller is saying and the dispatcher is saying. In that, it also translates automatically if a Spanish speaker were to begin speaking or Haitian Creole, Korean, languages that we can't pick up by our ear and know what they're saying. It automatically translates to English and provides an AI speaker in that language. So we type back our response, where is your emergency? And the AI speaker speaks it in their native language.
So in standard English, you would be communicating in real time, but AI picks up when it's a language that you don't have a dispatcher that can speak?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct. And with our current buoyance language line, we have to know what language to request an interpreter. And there have been times that we have no idea.
Gotcha.
What the language is.
Look, would this also go out on the air with the withdrawal cars and all that? I mean, it's just.
It, well, we can transmit the information through our CAD system and we can directly copy paste it from this program into it. And it does generate a summary of the call, which would expedite that information to them, yes.
So basically it's just making us more efficient.
Absolutely.
Which is your job.
Yes. And providing some skills that we just don't have, such as the translation.
So I guess the ask here is for us to approve you guys to enter into this contract?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Somebody going to get us the proper language for the? Okay. Y'all good with this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, that would be an agenda item for the E-911 Board meeting after the council meeting. And we will get some language drafted up. If you'd like us to add it to the, add it to the agenda, I'll get that.
Yeah, I think we're good with that.
Okay. The other thing that Mayor Cooper had grabbed me prior to the work session and asked if the council would consider closing city operations or most of them the Friday after Christmas. So we have Christmas Eve, which is Wednesday, and Thursday, Christmas Day off currently. There is a, that next Friday, the 26th, would be what the mayor would like to see, or at least considered. I've talked to most of our staff. Really, the biggest hurdle there is trash pickup. And I think that Shannon and Barry have a plan in place. Again, not asking to vote on anything right now, but obviously I would like some feedback from you all about if you would entertain that. We would need to bring it at the next council meeting. But moreover, we would need to start getting notice out to people on trash routes and, you know, people that might otherwise pay a water bill or do something so that they have enough notice that the city would be closed.
I don't have an issue with it. We've done it multiple times over the years, depending on, you know, how, I mean, how Thanksgiving or Christmas has fallen. So I think we typically do that for Thanksgiving anyway.
They have in the past, yes, ma'am. But this would be three days, which is not necessarily normal.
Are you talking about Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Correct.
Oh, I thought you meant Thursday and Friday. I misunderstood.
We're already scheduled to be closed Wednesday and Thursday, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. So, you know, there's not a lot of impact. Talking to Leanne about revenue and water. You know, really, business license season will start in January. So there won't be a lot of impact from that perspective. I've talked to Barry and Shannon about trash pickup. They think they have a plan to bring people in. It doesn't mean that trash won't get picked up on Wednesday. I think their plan right now would be to have people come in on Wednesday and then flip it over to give them Friday off. So it won't impact police or fire. They're going to work their normal shifts. But again, nothing to vote on tonight, but if you'd like me to prepare something for the next council meeting or not, that's really what I would be looking for.
I think from my perspective is I'm always, always willing to let people have some time off, but at the same time, you know, we've got a lot of people out here we're serving. And going to make sure that all of the city services continue operating as expected. Because you have three days off, but then you have the weekend. So you're technically five days, physical days that there's no, nothing happening at City Hall. And maybe that's not a problem. I would just say whatever we come back with on the next council meeting, would need to address any potential things. Because you know if something doesn't go right over that weekend, it'll be very loudly proclaimed.
Absolutely, I understand.
Yeah, I just want to know, have a schedule to know. And looking forward that this is not something that we'll be talking about three weeks from now, where trash still had been picked up.
Right.
We'll be further and further behind. I was under the impression of Thursday, Friday, but like I said, I want to, you know, I think you said Barry and them are going to try to come up with something that they feel, if they feel that they can keep up.
That's right. I don't know. Yeah, want to talk about that, Barry?
Ma'am, if y'all consider to do this, what Shannon and I have talked about is to do that week of Thanksgiving, do that week of Christmas like we do in Thanksgiving. So basically, we bring all of our people in on Wednesday. We have a full day. We take every vehicle, every person that we have and put them in the field on Wednesday. And it's all press-type effort that we pick up. If your garbage would be Thursday and Friday, if this is what y'all decide to do, if your garbage is Thursday, Friday, put it out on Wednesday, we will pick it up on Wednesday. It'll be a hard push for us, but we will get it done. And then back Monday, it goes back to the regular schedule as it has in the past. This is the same thing we do for Thanksgiving. When we're off Thursday and Friday, we will do the same exact schedule. We've already verified with the county that the landfill will be open on Wednesday. That's the day before Christmas and the Friday after. What we're talking about is running that Wednesday. And then we have to work out with our people whether they get paid for that Wednesday and give them, or give them another day off as a floating holiday. That's something to be worked out in the details. But Shannon and I put our heads together quickly and said, this is, this could follow the same schedule that we've done for Thanksgiving, if this is something y'all would like to do.
Did you say something about a floating crew on Friday? No, I didn't hear.
No, if y'all decide to give the day off for Wednesday and the employees decide to work, choices would be, if, depending on what HR allows us to do, we could either pay them for that day, you know, at an escalated rate, or maybe give them a floating holiday for the guys that worked on that Wednesday, if the rest of the city was off that Wednesday, to give them a day later on to be used as a floating holiday. Both of those are opportunities. I'd have to work that out with HR and make sure that we're in compliance with all the regulations. But if the city's closed on Wednesday, we would have our sanitation crew report Wednesday to pull this off, to keep garbage on track for that Wednesday. I think three days off would have a pretty significant impact on garbage in the city to be off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, to be honest with you.
Yeah, and y'all think that's the only department that's going to be crucial to?
I can only speak for my departments. And Jonathan, I think he's voiced on it from talking to revenue and water and all. Little to no impact for closing down. The biggest one that we see right now is sanitation with garbage across the city, from my perspective. So yeah, so in any event that we have, either water line breaks or a sewer line backup, we still have on-call services. Those ladies and gentlemen will still be on-call, as we would do for any after-hours or holiday call. Those people would still be on-call, so we would have those people available. The main push that I see would be the fact that picking up the garbage is more than just sending out garbage trucks into the field and picking up the garbage. We have a transfer station at Pollock Works where we transfer into larger trucks and run those to the landfill. I can't just have garbage truck garbage. I got to have the whole crew from sanitation to run the sanitation crew to keep that operation up and running. And that's why Shannon, I think that operating on Wednesday gives us a full Monday, Tuesday, all day Wednesday. And then we would be, if y'all decide to do this, close Thursday and Friday. But that, we could keep that on schedule. That would be our anticipation, ma'am.
I would say check back with your staff and crew. Make sure they don't already have holiday plans or, you know, make sure if you need everybody there on Wednesday, make sure that they're not already allocated and off. I would like to hear a plan from you guys, if that's what you want to do. The other question I have is, like, police and fire, are they getting paid? Do they get paid time and a half or extra rate for Wednesday, for Christmas Eve or?
They typically work their normal schedule, isn't that right?
So on holidays, if they work, if they're actually at the holiday, I mean, working the holiday, we put out a list and they have an option to accrue it for use of another day. They want to take off in the future. I give them three months to use that day. Or they can opt to get paid for that hour or for that day, so they get additional money on there for 12 hours as our shift, our day shift. So they get compensated. They just have, if they're not working that day, then they automatically accrue it.
Okay.
So yes, sir, they're compensated.
Same with you, David?
Okay. Okay. I would say just come up with a plan then and see. See if we can do something that matches maybe what they're doing or just come up with a plan to present to us. I'm open to it.
Yes, sir.
Everybody else good with that? All right.
So that concludes our Q4 goals.
All right. And then we will, let's move into reviewing the agenda. We'll begin with roll call, pledge of allegiance, and then approval of the agenda. Consideration of consent agenda. On this consent agenda, we have accounts payable. A3 for $13,852.92. Accounts payable, A1,170,000,430, 170,433.99. Contract billing, 727,042.64. Smith Environmental Construction for WWTP Upgrades. Project number one, Mechanical, 658,112.80. Barge, 2,785.50 for Airport Life Flight Hangar. Also, 5,464.15 for County Road 606 Relocation Airport. Poly Inc., 8,833.77 for Consulting Services Wastewater Treatment Plants. Johnson Materials Supply, 51,846.42. Crusher Run Parks and Recreation Parking Lot.
So what's Crusher Run?
It's little bitty rocks. It is.
Yes, ma'am, that is a, it's a type of, so it's crush rock. It's a gradation of the rock. So like you can order like number 57 stone, it's a type of stone. Crush and run means basically when they crush the stone, they leave all the fines in there. So it's a gradation that, it's crush rock, it's sand, it's all these different particles. Reason we like to use it on parking lots is when we put it down and we roll that stuff out, and compact it in place, it becomes like concrete, especially after it rains on it. So crush and run is just a gradation of rock, is your short answer. But we did the same thing for over at PV, Phase Two, the big gravel parking lots, the same stuff there. Our intention is to use that over there for the new area at the rec center until such time that we can get it paved, but it'll be a great base underneath the pavement to make the pavement hold up better. So that's the reason we used it, ma'am.
Thank you, not up on my rock study.
All right, any questions, concerns, anything we need to pull off the consent agenda? All right, we have some travel requests for administrative, fire department, parks, rec, and police department. Then we will consider a permit request for Mary Wiley MLK Memorial March, beginning at City Hall and ending at Liberty Missionary Baptist Church on Geneva Highway. Chief Moore, we good with this?
Yes, we're good.
All right. And then we will do privilege of the floor, staff reports, and old business, continuation of public hearing for nuisance properties, dangerous buildings.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. It's good to see you, Ben Goldman. I am coming back to you. These are a number of resolutions that were set before you in October, on October 7th originally, for a public hearing. We decided on that particular round, we had had a bit of trouble getting actual service via certified mail. So we thought it would be best on several of those. And several of them also were ones that we were working on remediation agreements. So a number of these were brought back to you in an attempt to get actual service or, and/or to do additional service via publication. We have done both. So there are three of them that we were able to get additional actual service on. The rest of them, we ran four insertions of our short form notice in the paper. So on all of these, we are recommending demolition. There, I would break this up though into two motions today, if it pleases the council. The first, there are three where we have been told by the property owners that either they want to complete the demolitions themselves or they're asking for some form of remediation agreement, but that has not been put forward yet in a form that we're ready to recommend to the council. So we are recommending demolition. But on those three, we would recommend that that come, that that motion be made with a request that the mayor administratively defer demolition for a period of 60 days. That would give us a firm time to inform the property owners, either to come forward with their final remediation agreement in a form where we can approve it and modify the resolution, or we just need to move on. I mean, all of these have been longer, and we already give, so again, just as a reminder, we begin by sending a 20-day courtesy letter. That happened on each and every one of these. When that didn't happen, then we began the formal process. That's a 50 to 60-day process. That got us to your October meeting. And now we've given an additional, you know, really 60 days since then. So you're talking about five months of a process on each and every one of these with all the forms of notice that we give and have tried to work through. So the three that we're recommending, that the motion be made to adopt the resolutions, but subject to administrative deferment for 60 days. Those are 100725A for 206 Mill Avenue, 100725C for 307 West Hildreth Avenue, and 100725G for 406 Dixie Drive. For each of the other ones, we would recommend that they just be adopted. So I think you could do those in two bulk motions.
I know 406 Dixie Drive, they were here in the last meeting and they had been making progress. So what they lack now outside of the progress is a standard plan to submit to the city?
Yes, sir. So basically what they just need to do is to submit us a timeline for the remediation agreement to say this is when they'll have this done, by this time, this, so forth and so on, to a point where we could accept that basically as a safe, sound, and sanitary dwelling. They've made a lot of substantial improvements to the property already with cleaning out the outside of the property along with the inside. They have certified that there is no infestation. They've gotten everything taken care of in that area. There's supposed to be a new roof going on the property soon. And Mr. Espada would be here to inform you that as well, but unfortunately he had some medical issues over the weekend and he's not able to attend today. But that's basically what we are waiting for, is just a standardized timeline to be able to say this is when he'll have it done, by this date, and so forth and so on. So when we bring that to you for the remediation agreement, you accept it. If it's not done by then, we take care of the issue ourselves by demolishing the property.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wanted to avoid the case that he's actively trying to improve the home and it gets demolished.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And on all of these, because we have, we are five months into the process and really right up knocking on the four-month door of when the first or the last lis pendens went out, we only have 100, under your ordinance, you have 120 days to act on the findings of the appropriate municipal official, or you have to start over. Which, so, which is one reason I have to be mindful of and I'm not recommending kind of pushing this further down the road to wait and see. I think, I think will be, there's really, and I'm glad you pointed that out, that that is why they are specifically cited to defer that demolition. We're fully expecting that to happen.
And then 307, that's the one that he wanted to have it redesignated to, like, storage?
Yes, sir. So basically what he has, what he has done so far is he's able to, he has been able to combine the parcels with the other parcel that he owns. The structure itself works within our accessory structure ordinance, within our zoning ordinance. So he doesn't have any problem there. Basically, what his plan is to do is to close up the windows, fix the siding, fix the roof, take off the pseudo bathroom that's attached to the property as well. Basically, just convert that into an accessory structure to be able to continue doing what he's using it for now, and that's storage. So he has taken steps to do that. Like I said, he's combined the parcel. He's working on a timeline to be able to remediate. And that's what we're waiting on from him to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
All right, then we review and consider ordinance, establish regulations for blade signs. We talked about this last meeting, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. I was just going to see if the council had any questions about it. Just remind the council that this was a ordinance that was brought to you because Main Street, Alabama, had a grant program that they applied for. They were able to, they were able to get the grants. But we had an ordinance that basically said signs weren't supposed to protrude over the sidewalk. So we were bringing this to you to allow for the blade signs, but also put standards and regulations on them as well.
Is a blade sign, is that what's over Magnolia Gaming?
Yeah, Magnolia Gaming, Rawls. It is a, it's an ordinance that's kind of a.
So it's already there?
That's, yeah, it's already there. It's kind of obscure. So we're just trying to clean it up and get it where. So we're just trying to clean it up and get it where we have regulations for it to allow, you know, to allow Magnolia sign, to allow Rawls sign, that type of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, under new business, we have a public hearing consideration, Resolution twelve oh two twenty-five, extending the deadline for demolition of structures. It's describing the report recommendation of extension for time for demolition for a period of a hundred and twenty days, making deadline April first, twenty twenty-six. That's what we just got through talking about, right?
Yes sir, so basically what this one is, this is for the phase one of the demolition program that we are asking for a continuance on. The basic issue that we had was when we were trying to bid these, we were not able to get, we weren't able to get contractors to bid at that time. We believe the reason for that was just, it was just a bad time in the year for them to want to build those types of projects. After we went to bid for the community development block grants, we were able to get multiple bids for that. So we do have confidence that when we go out to bid, that we will be able to get bids this time around. So we're just asking for that continuance, so that way we can go to bid, get them, and then get them on the ground.
Okay, so this is, this is separate from the list that we're
Yes sir.
Gotcha. All right.
Sir, just to follow up on that, Kim Hughes and, and the engineering department and I have put together at least a rough draft of what the bids would go out with. Schedule wise, what I anticipate is to have this on council agenda for, back for your review of bids by the end of January, probably by the second council meeting in January. So I'm asking for a little bit of time to get those back on the street, get them advertised, get the quotes in, and bring it back for your consideration and approval, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, authorized mayor to execute agreement with J. Michael Lee Associates to conduct a facility evaluation feasibility study for the Enterprise Public Library for a lump sum fee of twelve thousand dollars. This study is FY twenty-six budgeted item.
Yes, good morning, council. This is something that we want to come in and evaluate. I've got Barry Mott to assist me with his knowledge of firms, and we settled on this firm. We met with him a couple of weeks back. They'll come in, evaluate our current library art structure, basically the bones and the guts of that building. Give us a feasibility study, if that's something, put a price tag on it, what it would look like to renovate that building. Also come in and look at other areas within the city of something that if we wanted to relocate or build a new library altogether. So again, this is FY twenty-six budgeted item, and this would give us the go-ahead to go ahead and get them moving, get them in, and get a study done, and then come back to you and present that.
All right.
Excuse me, do you know if they're gonna do a little survey with, say, the council or patrons? I know they will with, with the librarian, but I'd sure like to get involved. And I think the other ones of, of, you know, what the city needs, what they want, you know, just ideas like that.
Yes sir, and talking to them the other day, obviously, you know, that'll come down later down the line as they do the study. But obviously talking to Sheila will be a big, big key, and then sitting down with us, and then sitting down with you as the council and see what you would like to see from the, from a library standpoint.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to make sure they are gonna, they are gonna consult with the librarian Sheila?
Yes sir.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is authorized mayor to execute amended lease agreement. I will recuse myself from this one. Enterprise Business Incubator, Paget Brands, and Hello Chunky Cookie Company.
So really, this is, the agreement's already been approved. There were some issues with how we were accounting for a couple of different things. So one, Councilman Paget has, I guess, multiple businesses that operate under an umbrella. The lease wasn't reflective of that, to allow those other businesses. It was only through the one entity, I think Hello Chunky, and maybe not the Paget Brands. So we're expanding that so that he can utilize that space for the, the various LLCs that are encompassed by that. And then we have how, how we were accruing in, in, because there's only one meter on there for utilities, like power and gas and all those things. It was not, it was not really clear. I think there was an understanding that was done with our Economic Development Office, city attorney, and Councilman Paget. That was not reflected in the language of the lease that we executed. And so I don't know that it was fair, like for instance, there was some work that was done on the security system at the incubator that Councilman Paget paid for. That impacted the security, not just for his side of the building, but the, the entire security that, that's part of the city property. So there was nothing in the, in the language of the lease to allow him to have a credit on payment for rent for that. So the, the work, the understanding that we had going into the lease was that he would have a credit if he paid for the work himself, rather than have to go through and the city pay to do the work. There would be a credit that was given, that was not reflected in, in the, in the lease documents or language. As well as how we calculated the, the utility rates for him. Because he's not the only tenant in, in the building. Wiregrass Economic Development, WRC, as well as some time-to-time city and the, the Wiregrass Transit Service all have space in there, but there's still only one meter. So we, we cleaned that language up to give a clear calculation, which is defined in the subsequent documents. There's, there's a, an Excel spreadsheet and chart that shows the, the, the rent rate and the, the deductions that would be allowable.
So basically adding the Paget Brands part, 'cause wasn't Chunky Cookie before, was, it was both one and two?
Yes, and, and there, there are other, I guess, freeze dried goods or something that, that he manufactures outside of just cookie, that's in a different LLC. And so the, the, the lease wasn't reflective of that. He wasn't allowed to sublease it or do anything, which he wasn't. It was, just cleans it up so that it's the umbrella company that's over there. Can I say, I mean, is that?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, basically, all of, everything we're doing was in the original agreement, just didn't get reflected in the lease so that city staff could follow through with what the original agreement was.
All we can do is read the lease, what it says, and what the calculations say. So if, if the, the calculations were not done, so there, if you look back in, in Greg's Economic Development folder that Jesse Quillan had, there's a clear defined lease rate that's in there. That was not reflected in, in the, the documents there. So when we, we get a bill for power, we say sixty percent of that is, we, we don't get to interpret that. And we didn't have a chart or anything to go by. This, this gives us a methodology with which to apply when we get the bill, who's responsible for what percentage of, and it'll help us out on our audits moving forward. Anything else?
Good. Any questions, I can be on the hot seat. What's that? You need to see more cookies? All right, then, as I said, I will recuse myself from that vote. Authorized mayor to negotiate agreement. Mayor and city administrator in, in consult, consultation with the city attorney to negotiate an agreement between the City of Enterprise and Enterprise City School Board pertaining to Old Coppinville Junior High School.
We talked about this in executive session at the last meeting, but any questions?
And then we'll call for a motion to authorize police chief to execute a two-year agreement between Gracie Global LLC, doing business as Gracie University, and Enterprise Police Department to use a licensed property and license ride to the Safe Wrap system.
Yes sir, excuse me, so I sent two instructors train the trainer program for more defensive tactics and restraints. Gracie University's been around for a very long time. And they have taught this new proprietary system called Safe Wrap, what takes two people, two officers, and you safely take somebody that's combative, under control, with no injury to the officer, no injury to the, to the individual. And so in order for them to start teaching this and training this, where we actually have the support, legal support and everything else from Gracie Industries, I have to enter into a contract. Since I sent them to the school though, they'll give me two years for free, and which can be extended later time for that, for me to be able to teach that and use their Safe Wrap name and everything else through Gracie Industries.
Was this a budgeted item?
There's no cost to it.
There's no cost?
No sir, there's no cost to it at all.
Okay.
No.
So it's just a two-year agreement because you went through the training to
Yes sir.
be able to use it?
Yes sir.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
And then we will call for a motion to set a public hearing for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM on the matter of revoking or refusing to renew a business license for Enterprise Metals and Recycling located at nine thirty Bellwood Road. Somebody wanna speak to this, or?
Jonathan, do you want me to address the recycling center? We have been, and we, we've received several complaints from property owners and all, and actually gone out there to, to meet with the property owner at Old Bellwood Road. What we're asking for is to, for you to set a public hearing for the next council meeting on December the sixteenth, to listen to what staff's recommendations are, an update on the conditional use variance that was issued at the time, and to talk about a process moving forward for that property.
Okay, so we will make any decisions today at just setting a hearing?
Setting the hearing for next council meeting, yes sir.
All right, then we will recess regular session, convene to the E nine one one board meeting. So we will move over to that agenda. And we will roll call, review minutes, no old business, accounts payable, and then we'll have an additional item on the agenda to vote on allowing them to enter to a contract with prepared by accident, as was discussed earlier in the work session. Then we will adjourn that meeting, reconvene, regular session, have mayor's report and council comments, and adjourn. Any questions on the agenda? All right. Mr. Tellus, you have anything else for this work session that you would like to discuss?
No sir, we're, Chief Moore and I were just working on getting a, a copy for your E nine one one agenda item to add, so.
Counsel, anything else you guys want to discuss in this work session? All right, well then we will recess the work session and reconvene at twelve o'clock for our council meeting.
But if we moved it, he can't support us because he's got another parade on. And he just told us to, Troy canceled their parade, and somebody else canceled. So he's out of his mind. But the thing is, I told Aaron earlier, I said, if that's only five people out of a hundred and six. Yeah. So the thing is, if we moved it and we printed the rental folks to give back, and then we do a five folks, and say, hey, get a trailer. And I, I don't have my list, I was gonna look at the list and see who those five people are. And words aren't the right.
No, no. And the transcription is like, what, what the heck did they say?
All right, we will call this, uh, regular session of the Enterprise City Council to order. The roll call show that all members are attendants except Councilman Casey Mack, who could not be here today. We will begin with the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mayor, if you would pray for us, stand.
May we pray, most gracious and heavenly Father, we will thank thee for this day and the many blessings that have been stored upon us, as we gather today for the betterment of our city and now carry our city policy to the Lord, strengthen us where we feel as, where we're torn down, and give us that love that goes from heart to heart and breast to breast. Father, we just thank you for this day, we thank you for our facilities, we thank you, God, for the city of Enterprise. May bless each one of us in this audience, and bless those that desire to come and want to come and are unable, have mercy upon us all, these and others blessed, in the name of our son, Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Johnson, the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, a call for a motion to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, all ma, uh, now we will consider the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the council for review, are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion of the city council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request of a member of the city council. A call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, now we'll consider a permit request, uh, from Mary Wiley for the M L K Memorial March. Call for consideration of a request on behalf of Mary Wiley, Good Samaritan Helping Hands, to obtain a permit to hold a memorial march honoring Dark, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior on Sunday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-six, at two o'clock P M. The march will begin at City Hall and end at Liberty Missionary Baptist Church on Geneva Highway. Chief Moore has already given his approval during the work session. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the permit request as submitted.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, now we'll have approvals to the floor. This is part of the meeting where anyone in attendance today who wishes to address the council may do so for three minutes. If there's a public hearing on the agenda for the topic you're concerned with, please wait until that public hearing opens to address the council. They choose staff, mayor, and council where respond to your comments during the appointed times later in the meeting. Repetitive, disruptive, and disparaging comments will not be tolerated. If you're found out of order, your privileges can and will be revoked. Does anyone wish to address the council at this time? All right, if you'll come forward and state your name? Cannot, can you, somebody get that mic on?
Good afternoon, Mike Bentley, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm naturally loud, so. Uh, so, good afternoon, mayor and council members, my name is Mike Bentley. I'm here today because Enterprise is facing an escalating animal crisis, one that is taking lives every single day, cannot be dismissed as an unfortunate byproduct of limited resources, and will only intensify without a coordinated response. Thank you for all of your leadership you've already shown. Waiving the fees for our local shelters to pull animals from Colony was absolutely the right decision, and has made an immediate impact. That action matters. It showed responsiveness, compassion, and a willingness to step in when the situation demanded it. For that, the community and the shelters are genuinely grateful. Because of this action, we have been able to move over twenty animals from that kill shelter to safety, and that matters. But that step, as important as, as it was, highlights the bigger truth we're facing. The problem is larger than any one action or one policy. Enterprise has a real crisis, and I'm going to speak plainly about it. Every single day in this city, dogs and cats are being killed, not euthanized. We need to stop softening the language. Euthanasia is mercy. What's happening here is the direct result of no space, no resources, and no coordinated structure. And because of that, healthy, adoptable animals are losing their lives. I've lived in communities across the world for the past fifty-six years, and I have not ever seen conditions this hard on animals, and that includes Leesville, Louisiana. But I also have never seen a community with leadership more ready to do something about it. S O S Animal Shelter, WAG, Southern Dog Mission, and countless others are doing everything humanly possible. They take in animals knowing full well that they are at capacity, they stretch their food, their space, and their volunteers further than any system should ever ask. They perform heroics, and heroics are not a sustainable plan. The past two months have proved something important to me. Enterprise is not lacking compassion, Enterprise is lacking structure. Psalm one forty-five nine says, "The Lord is good to all, he has compassion on all he has made." Compassion should be the standard, for people, for community, and yes, for the animals entrusted to our, excuse me, to our care. This is not a political debate, this is a moral responsibility and equality of life issue, and it cannot rest solely on the city's shoulders or the backs of overwhelmed shelters. It must be a partnership, city, shelters, and citizens working together. Here's what that partnership looks like, a formal structured collaboration between the city and the local shelters, a working group with shared priorities, shared metrics, and shared accountability, a robust foster and volunteer network. This community wants to help, they've shown it. We need a system to channel that help effectively. Support expanding S O S capacity, which has been brought up before, and helping those like Southern Dog Mission move from private homes into a real facility. Space fosters saved lives, this is the simplest truth in animal welfare. A public transparency dashboard, when citizens see the real numbers, intake, adoptions, reductions in killing of animals, it builds trust and motivates more people to get involved. A unified message and a shared commitment. The city shows leadership, the shelters show expertise, the citizens show compassion, everyone has a role, because one thing is absolutely certain, doing nothing guarantees the same outcome. Animals will continue to be killed, not because they are dangerous, not because they are sick, be, but because the system is overwhelmed. I'll leave you with this, dogs will die tonight at Colony. They will bring their, they will wag their tails today, eat their foods, and then be led away to die, not due to behavior, not due to illness, but due to lack of space and coordination. That is not mercy, that is killing, that is a failure we can fix. And here's the part that gives me hope, this council has already shown a willingness to act, this community is ready to partner, and for the first time in a long time, the momentum is absolutely real. So I'm not here to point fingers, I'm here to ask for unity. Let's build a system where the city's administrative capability, the shelter's hands-on expertise, and the community, community's compassion work as one. Let's build something better, something that honors the values of this city, let's make the city a progress, mean progress for these animals too. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your willingness to stand with us as partners. I'm ready to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any staff reports? Mr. Mont?
Sorry, got a couple of things real quick for you. We talked about garbage being on schedule, um, just want to let you know that currently, when we talk about our schedule for that week, if that's what the council decides to do, we're talking about automated garbage, that's, that's the one that, for Shannon and I, are the, are the big ones for Christmas time, Thanksgiving, the people that roll their cans to the street, and the cans don't get picked up, those are on schedule currently, and because of the budgets you've been allowing Public Works to work under, buying the trucks and stuff, we've been able to keep automated on the schedule. We do have some new, um, knuckle boom trucks that have been put into the fleet, and what we have seen typically in the past, when we come off of a Thanksgiving Day week, or something like that, we get week behind. We are, we are better than what we were, we're currently on the county bulk, which is bulk garbage that goes to county landfill, we're two days behind. Basically, what that means is we are picking up Friday's route today, and what we do is we stay on schedule, like, we don't just skip a day and leave it on the street for a week till the next time it comes around, we stay on schedule till we catch back up. So county bulk, we're two days behind, on grinding site bulk, we're one day behind, we're picking up Monday's route today. Um, that's typical, I'd say in the past, we're trying to get better, so that when these holidays hit, that we don't have any disruption there, um, that is our goal, um, but currently, we're, we're two days behind, and that's following with Thanksgiving Day week, so that is a lot better, um, I'm, I'm proud that we're better, but we're still, we strive for excellence, and we will, we will continue to do that, and see if we can keep this thing back on schedule, so that even when we have a day that's two days out, we will try to, to keep services where they should be, without being too fat and having too many people and too much equipment for these, for these times that we have, Thanksgiving and, and Christmas week typically, are the two bads, times that we have. But, um, one thing that I've reached out to a couple of you, and you've reached out to me, we're seeing an abundance of tires that are out into the public, uh, we've had several groups that have gone out to cleanup days, and want to know what to do with the tires. We have reached out, we have a program set up with the county, and with, they have a contract or a agreement through A D E M, we get a small bit of reimbursement back on these tires, so what we're asking, um, everybody do is if you have one or two tires, if you put them on the street, we will come pick them up in the very short term. That is in, um, that is against what our policy says, um, but, uh, Shannon and I put our heads together, and I'm, I'm bringing this up to you, because if you want us to act differently, I will be glad to do whatever you tell us to do. What we're finding is the public will not do anything with them, and they're sitting on the side of the roads, they're an eyesore, they're a nuisance, they're a problem, and, um, we have an avenue right now to at least get reimbursed back a portion of the cost to do that. This week alone, we have just taken on ourselves to do this, we've picked up, uh, over eighty tires this week out there in the public, those are onesie twosie type deals. Um, if we get into a situation where we have an abundance, like a whole ravine full of tires, we, we're not prepared for that, but, uh, if you have something there, if we, if we're driving the streets, if we see them on the right of ways, we are picking them up, and we're cleaning them up. Um, I heard from a couple of the councilmen that they would like to see that done, and we are, we're just taking care of it, unless the council wants us to do something different.
Are we still charging folks, bring tires to the recycle side?
Um, what were thoughts are, Mr. Johnson, is to, for the next couple of weeks, if we can clean up what's in the right of way, then we'll go back to the normal policy, we just, we see them sitting on the side of the road, no one's doing anything about them, so we're, we're actually like today, when it's raining outside, and we can't, we have crews that are, are down because of the weather, we're sending people out there with trailers and trucks, and we're picking those tires up and taking them back to the, to the Public Works facility.
Okay, so if I, a couple that I've seen, if I put them in my car and bring them down, I can just drop them off there?
Yeah, my thoughts are, if we could do it over this week and next week, and get caught back up, and kind of make a dent, dent into what's out there into the public, then we go back under our normal policy. I'm not encouraging that we violate the policy, but in the next couple of weeks, we're, we're trying to clean up the neighborhoods, and, um, we're seeing, as we have a, like a gentleman that we'll talk later on, he has a building there that he's cleaned up, and he's, he's gotten it off the blacklist, but he has a handful of tires and what to do with that, so, uh, we want to work with people that are trying to clean up the communities, so that's what we're trying to do, and, um, just this week alone, like eighty tires, that's, that's the rough estimate of what we've seen so far.
Is that reimbursement, is that just for a short period of time, or is that a permanent reimbursement?
Uh, it's a short, it's a short term, it's a term-type agreement that, that the county has with A D E M. Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, um, point being is, we're not inviting the public to, to violate the policy, we're not inviting the public to say, hey, we're going to change the way we're handling stuff. This is a very short term, what we've run across is some of these homes that people are cleaning up right now, they don't know what to do with this, and we're trying to, to be a good partner with these individuals that own these properties, um, but also, as we're driving the routes, our truck drivers know where these tires are on the side of the road, and no one's taking ownership of it, so what we're doing is, what we're trying to do is for the next few days, is go around and just pick those things up and get them done. Now, we're not getting reimbursed a hundred percent, don't, don't think of that's the case, we're getting a, a fraction of the funds back, but the county is working with us to use their program with A D E M to get some reimbursement back. So we're basically collecting what we see on the street, so the rest of this week, um, seeing how it goes, collecting those, putting them at Public Works, and then we're going to work with the county to have them disposed of properly, and see if we can take advantage of that program, to at least get some reimbursement back for that. I'd encourage, I would, my recommendation is we continue to follow the policy that we have out there, people want to come and bring their stuff to, to Public Works, to the recycling center, there is a policy for that, and a way for them to do that properly, and we would like for them to continue to do that, but for right now, we're just, we seeing an abundance in the field, and we'd like to just take the next week, this week, and, and possibly first next week, and try to get as many of those up as we can.
So, so what is that process, if the general public has a tire that they need to get rid of, instead of throwing on the side of the road, what should they do with that?
Shannon, do you have that, do you know that? I'll let Shannon talk to that, he's, he knows those numbers and the policy, if you don't mind.
If they got, if they got tires, they bring them to us, and we charge them a fee, and we dispose of the tire, but that's what we do when they have them, if they got some of their yard they want to get rid of, they just bring a couple of tires, we charge them a fee, and then we dispose of them for them.
Is the fee per tire, or?
Yes, ma'am, it's a fee per tire, and depend on the side of tire, regular car tire is like three dollars a piece, the big truck tires would be like five dollars.
And that's, that's information I would like for us to kind of make available, I don't know if that's through the website or whatever means, because I do get a lot of calls, just, a lot of people want to know about how to dispose of, maybe not just eighty per se, but three or four, or something like that, and to know that that is a resource, and, and actually know how much it is, it's going to cost, and all of that.
Yes, ma'am, it'll be, it's really easy to get inundated if we decide that we're just going to start taking tires for free, because I'm going to tell you, there's businesses in town that take off tires, and they will start dumping them on the side of the roads, and I'll just tell you, if we.
And we had a problem with that some years ago.
And we still do, ma'am.
I mean, it's still there, but I, you know, we've been talking about this for.
And, and there's no way that this will handle that problem, but what we've got is we've got onesie twosies that are out there on the routes that we see every single week, as the truck drivers going around, and Shannon and I put our heads together and say, if, why don't we take, take a short period of time, let's go and pick up what we see out there. out there, and if we catch the people that are dumping on the side of the roads, we will use everything we can within the limits of the law to prosecute those people for dumping on the right of way. There is a policy, bring it to Public Works, pay the per tire fee and do that. However, these are tires that are on the side of the road, typically they're in abandoned lots, there's not a house there, and we can either turn a blind eye and say, we hope it gets better, and that's not getting any better, so we decided that we would go around at least this week and, and clean those up while we had a few extra resources of people to put behind a pickup truck and a trailer to pick those up. So I just want to give you a report back that this is a short-time thing, I'd like to get it finished up this week, and then we go back to the normal, but that's something we're trying to do to make the, the community a better place. In addition to that, we have, for the next council meeting, we have a demo property update, so we, we're up for our quarterly update for that for you. The request was to get it to you a little bit ahead of the meeting, so we will try to have that out there with your package, so you can look at the presentation ahead of time, maybe have some questions when we come to that council meeting next time on December the sixteenth. I did receive a, a update from our consultant on the bypass widening right before I walked into the meeting. They are close to submitting a thirty percent set of plans to Aldott on that. They asked when we would like to do that, so I'll work with, with Jonathan, the mayor, about getting on your council agenda, I'm thinking maybe right after the first year, have them come down and do a full presentation to you about where we are at thirty percent. So I'm excited to present that to you. They're getting really close on having that presentation ready for the, for you to view, and so I'm looking maybe at January will be a good time, if, if that works with everybody's schedule. The last item I have is I just want to take a minute and congratulate Jonathan Lucas. He's out in the audience, he has his first day on staff, he's the new assistant city engineer in the engineering department, so take a minute to introduce yourself to Jonathan. We're real excited to have him. He comes with us with over ten years of experience, engineering background, super guy, very, very excited to have him on our team, he'll be a great resource for the city, so I just want to take a minute and, to introduce him to you. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Raise your hand, John.
Okay. I thought. And very, I just, I think Emily found it, but I think those dollar amounts and stuff are in our regs.
They are.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So people can see them.
We'll, we'll check the website, make sure they're posted, ma'am, as you.
Yeah.
As you pointed out, we'll make sure that those are out there, that the public can easily find those, we'll make sure those get updated on the website. I'll take care of that. Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Mott said, I think, through that, maybe what, what I heard, at least sitting over on the side, and some of our other staff members heard, maybe isn't what, what he was intending. I don't want to have an unintended consequence of the public or elected officials advising the public to just bring tires or dump them out by the street, in that we're going to pick them up for free or offer a new service for tire collections. I think that'll open Pandora's box, unless you guys tell us otherwise. I, I, I think, you know, that we're, we're trying to make the city clean, in an effort where there, there are problems, we're going to address them, that may be conflict with policy at times, but outside of that, like, if, if they're caught dumping tires, there are fines, there, there are laws that, against that, and if they want to get rid of tires, they need to do it the right way and bring it to Public Works and pay the, you know, whatever the fee is per tire, it sure beats driving up to the landfill and having to do it yourself, and it sure makes your community nicer than dumping it on the side of the road.
Right, and that's, that's, that's my point in saying, having a little additional blurb to this, because everybody's not going to hear this, so that other people can, you know, there's something that they can see that, we're not changing the policy, you know. We want you to be aware of what it actually is, if you need to, to get rid of something.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other staff reports? We'll move into old business, continuation of public hearing, nuisance properties, dangerous buildings. We're going to continue the October seventh, twenty twenty-five public hearing to hear, consider, and act upon all objections or protests, if any, for the removal of an unsafe building or structure to the extent that it's become a public nuisance. At two oh six Mill Avenue, two sixteen Pledger Street, three oh seven West Hildreth Avenue, two thirty, two thirty-one Ellis Street, four oh four Chambers Street, four oh six Dixie Drive, five sixteen Friendship Street, five nineteen West Hildreth Avenue, and six oh nine Grand Pine Drive. All right, Mr. Goldman?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We come back on this continued hearing from October seventh, and, and so I'll begin by incorporating by reference the materials that were, that were made available on October seventh, so that we don't have to rehash that. In addition, you have been provided with a new binder, this is an update on some of the additional mailings and affidavits of publication, and receipts for certified mailings that were available as of the time this was put together, but they've continued to come in even through this morning on some of the green cards. I, I'll also mention that there is a letter that is on file with the office of the city clerk that gave notice specifically of this hearing today, and we were able to get good service on that. We did, since we were here in October, we ran four insertions in the paper of our short-form notice of this hearing. So our recommendation comes in two pieces today. We do, we are calling for resolutions that order the demolition of each of the properties that are set for public hearing, but on three of those, we're going to ask that those be made by a separate motion, and that those be, that those resolutions be subject to an administrative deferment of sixty days, to give us some time to continue to work through some, some issues with the three properties at issue there. Those are two oh six Mill Avenue, two sixteen Pledger Street, and, I'm sorry, two oh six Mill Avenue, three oh seven West Hildreth Avenue, and then finally, four oh six Dixie Drive. We do have some up-to-date photographs of the conditions of the property that Mr. Mott can take you through very quickly.
Counsel, I'll go through these very quickly with you, but this is two oh six Mill Avenue, the picture of the building, and now its current condition from today, actually from yesterday when I took this picture. It's currently a slab, it's been tore down all the way. Basically, what the, what we're going to work on is getting that slab recertified to potentially be rebuilt on at a later date. Yeah, the one on the left is the condition of the building when the letter went out, when we went through the less pendants, and then it's been tore down since then. The slab remains. This is the current condition of two sixteen Pledger Street, severely dilapidated on the outside, potential issues on the inside with work done that was never inspected. This is the reason why we're asking for this to be ordered to be demolished. Three oh seven West Hildreth Avenue, this is going to be one that we're going to ask for sixty days of, to stay the order for sixty days for administrative, administratively. I'm working with Mr. Wheeler to get a timeline together for the council to repair any of the issues on the outside, take off the, the bathroom on that right-side picture that you can see, and do other, do other remediation to the building to make it into the accessory This is two thirty-one Ellis Street, this is one that we had to bring forth that was originally on the GIS, listed as four oh two Grime Street, but after we dug through some of the records with the county, we were able to confirm that this was two thirty-one Ellis Street. This is a severely dilapidated building that we're asking for, to be ordered to demolish. This is four oh four Chambers Street, we're having issues with this, with a lot of vagrancy, people breaking into the property, it's severely dilapidated and, and not inhabitable condition, we're asking for demolition. This is four oh six Dixie Drive, the owners of the property have been working very diligently to clean out the, clean up the outside as long with the inside. They have, they have got exterminator to come out there, give them a certification that there is no infestation in the building, there's supposed to be a roof going on the property in the next week or so that they're working on, and we are asking to stay this, or asking to stay the demolition for sixty days administratively. Five sixteen Friendship Street, this is a completely dilapidated structure, severely dilapidated, probably could breathe on it and fall over. Five nineteen West Hildreth Avenue, this is a structure that we're actually able to get in contact with the owner and be able to get on the Community Development Block Grant, it has been accepted into Phase Two, it's just pending historical acceptance. Six oh nine Grand Pine is a very dilapidated building, and inside is gutted out, dilapidated, water damage throughout, we're asking to, this to be demolished.
At this time, I would recommend that anyone who has an interest in the property, who wishes to be heard further on this, be given an opportunity to speak, and then after that, the general public, and then if we could just reserve the right for final comments before the public hearing is closed.
All right. Is there anyone with an interest in any of these properties that would like to address the council? Anyone from the general public? All right, Mr. Goldman, I guess it's back to you.
At this time, I believe it would be appropriate, unless the council has any questions, to close the public hearing.
All right, counsel?
We asked those questions during the, the work session, and I'll just reiterate here, just to make sure that four oh six Dixie, I know they were here before, they're wanting to make progress and improve and have that home brought back to livable conditions, and the goal here is not to have that torn down while they're working on that.
Yes, sir, and so that, that sixty days is to enable us to be able to finalize a remediation agreement with that property owner. The property owner has been in touch, would have been here today, but for medical condition, that communication has been very good.
And y'all help him formulate that agreement so it's satisfactory, he doesn't have, just have to come up with something, submit it, and hope it's going to be good enough? I mean, is the city working with him to help?
So the, the city, the city, the city will formulate the agreement itself, it, it is, it is standard and a form. What we ask the property owner to do are, in terms of attachments to it, are one, to give us some, some sort of plan, and I'm not talking about architectural plans in this case, but really an idea of what it is they're planning to do to the building, and then a Gantt chart, which shows their plan for how they will time it out, and we, we can provide them with a, with a blank Gantt chart, although they're available all over the internet, and different people have different ones they prefer. Where, where, where I would say, just to make sure, kind of in setting expectations, not just for this one, because again, we, we really do want to be helpful to this property owner, what your building staff cannot do is formulate plans. They're very good, and, and that's not just your staff, but all building staffs, they're, they're really only capable of reviewing them, not formulating them, so, but that being said, I know that they've given feedback, and that there has been discussions of the things that are expected to be addressed.
That's it, that's, that's kind of where I was going, he knows what's going to, what it takes to get his name off of the demolition list. Okay, all right, good.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing no further questions, this public hearing is closed.
Counsel, I would just like, like to make one comment to Councilman Walls' comment about helping four oh six Dixie Drive, and this is the reason why we are giving that sixty-day stay. That's the same, our same intention with three oh seven West Hildreth and two oh six Mill Avenue, is to be able to say those orders, get the remediation in place, and to be able to get them off the, the demolition proceeding. It's not just for four oh six Dixie Drive, but for everyone that is, has reached out to us, that is trying to work with us and be good stewards to the city with their property.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
All right. At this, at this time, I would recommend that the council take this up in two motions. The first would be a motion to adopt resolutions ten oh seven twenty-five A, C, and G concerning two oh six Mill Avenue, three oh seven West Hildreth Avenue, and four oh six Dixie Drive, approving those resolutions, subject to administrative deferment of demolition for a period of sixty days, in an attempt to work through agreements with those owners.
So you said subject to administrative?
Deferment.
Deferment.
For a period of sixty days.
And then just adopt the rest of them.
And then the second, the second motion would be to adopt the remainder of the resolutions.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adopt resolution ten zero seven twenty-five A, C, and G, referring to two oh six Mill Avenue, three oh seven West Hildreth, and four oh six Dixie Drive, to approve with administrative deferment for a period of sixty days? Do I have a motion for that?
I move that we approve, or that we adopt those resolutions, subject to the administrative deferment for that period of sixty days for those addresses mentioned, two oh six Mill Avenue, three oh seven West Hildreth, and four oh six Dixie Drive.
Second?
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. And then call for a motion to adopt resolution ten zero seven twenty-five B, E, F, J, K, and M, referring to two sixteen Pledger Street, two thirty-one Ellis Street, four oh four Chambers Street, five sixteen Friendship Street, five nineteen West Hildreth Avenue, and six oh nine Grand Pine Drive. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I move to adopt resolution ten oh seven twenty-five B, C, E, F, J, K, M.
We've already done C.
Not C.
So.
Oh, not C, excuse me, I had circled the wrong one. E, F, J, K, and M, which is two sixteen Pledger, two thirty-one Ellis, four oh four Chambers, five sixteen Friendship Street, five nineteen West Hildreth Avenue, and six oh nine Grand Pine Drive.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now I call for consideration of ordinance eleven eighteen twenty-five A, providing to amend section eighteen fourteen of the Enterprise City Code, overhanging name signs to establish regulations for blade signs. We discuss this in session, do I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt ordinance eleven eighteen twenty-five A.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, under new business, we have a public hearing and consideration of resolution twelve oh two twenty-five, extend deadline, deadline for demolition. Call for a public hearing prior to consideration of resolution twelve oh two twenty-five, extending the deadline for the demolition of structures as described in the Report of Recommendation of Extension for Time for Demolition for a Period of One Hundred and Twenty Days, making the deadline April first, twenty twenty-six. All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the city to speak on this?
Counsel, so this is basically an attenuation, we're asking for a continuation for Phase One of the demolition program. The issue that we were having when we put these out to bid the first time, we received no bids, we believe that that was just a, a timing issue, where we were bidding them at the, where we were bidding at in the year. After we went through the Community Development Block Grant first phase, we were able to get a lot more bids, and we're very confident that we put these out to bid later this month, that we should receive bids back, and we should be able to bring bids to you sometime in January, probably at the second January meeting.
Okay. Is there anyone with an interest in these properties that would like to address the council? Anyone from the general public? All right, seeing none, this public hearing is closed, and I call for consideration of resolution twelve oh two twenty-five.
I move to adopt resolution twelve oh two twenty-five.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Call for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with J. Michael Lee Associates Incorporated to conduct a facility evaluation and feasibility study for the Enterprise Public Library for a lump sum fee of twelve thousand dollars. The study is a fiscal year twenty-six budgeted item.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with J. Michael Lee Associates Incorporated as set forth in the terms of the proposal.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Call for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an amended agreement between the City of Enterprise and Paget Brands LLC and Hello Chunky Cookie Company LLC for the lease of Manufacturing Bay number one, Manufacturing Bay number two, Office one and Office two located within Enterprise and Business Incubator at 102 Commerce Drive as per the terms of the lease agreement. Let the record show, I'll be abstaining from this vote. And do I have a motion?
Move to authorize the mayor to execute the amended lease agreement as submitted.
Second?
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Call for a motion to authorize the mayor and city administrator in consult, consultation with the city attorney to negotiate an agreement between the City of Enterprise and Enterprise City School Board pertaining to Old Coppinville Junior High School.
I move to authorize the mayor and the city administrator in consultation with the city attorney to negotiate an agreement with Enterprise City School Board pertaining to the Old Coppinville Junior High School.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Call for a motion to authorize the police chief to execute a two-year agreement between Gracie Global LLC, doing business as Gracie University, and the Enterprise Police Department to use the licensed property and license rights of the Safe Wrap System, a proprietary system and safe and effective restraining techniques while dealing with hostile and disorderly individuals that must be restrained.
I move to authorize the police chief to execute their agreement as submitted.
A second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, call for a motion to set a public hearing for December 16th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM on the matter of revoking or refusing to renew a business license for enterprise metals and recycling located at 930 Bellwood Road.
I call for a public hearing to be held on December 16th, 2025 at 6:00 PM on the matter of revoking or refusing to renew a business license for enterprise metals and recycling located at 930 Bellwood Road.
Second?
That doesn't need a second, does it? You mean a motion? Aren't you just saying that you're going to call for it and we're going to take it up on the 16th?
Yeah, I think so. So. All right, we will recess a regular session and convene into the E-911 board meeting. Let the record show that all members of the E-911 board are present with the exception of Casey Mack. Call for a motion to approve the November 3rd, 2025 E-911 board meeting minutes as written.
Move to approve the November 3rd, 2025 E-911 board mem, meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, no old business today, new, under new business, call for a motion to approve accounts payable A for November 2025 in the amount of $2,221.81.
Move to approve accounts payable A for November 2025 in the amount of $2,221.81.
A second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a, an addition to the agenda. Call for a motion to authorize police chief to execute a three-year contract with prepared by Axion in the total amount of $32,189.50 for an AI assisted call taking platform system.
I move to authorize the police chief to execute a three-year agreement with, prepared by Axion in the total amount of $32,189.50.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now adjourn the E-911 board meeting. And reconvene in our regular session. Mayor, do you have a report for us?
This week officially kicks off our Christmas season here in Enterprise. We have a full lineup of festivities for our community. Tonight is our Christmas tree lighting and holiday market at the Enterprise Farmers Market from 4 to 8:00 PM. I want to thank our public works and park and recreation teams for the tremendous work they put in to make our city sparkle. Their efforts truly helped create the festive atmosphere we'll all enjoy this time of year. On Thursday, we will welcome thousands of visitors to downtown Enterprise for the annual Christmas parade. The parade begins at 6:30 PM. It is always one of our most beloved traditions. Then on Saturday, the families can enjoy the annual Whoville celebration from 10 to 4:00 PM downtown. It's a wonderful foreign field event for residents and visitors of all ages. We are actively monitoring the weather and understand that adjustments to the schedule may be necessary. I encourage everyone to keep an eye on the city's Facebook page for the latest updates. As always, I'm honored to serve as your mayor. May God bless Enterprise and may God bless America. Thank you.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you everyone for coming this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Bentley, for addressing us with your concerns about the animal issue here. Certainly want to welcome Mr. Lucas to our city and to our engineering department. I hope everybody has a safe week with all the activities we got going on and enjoy the start of the holiday season. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you for coming and thank you for all our citizens that are watching us during our streaming here. And thank you, Ms. Bentley. We've talked a couple of times and you know, I'm in your corner, so just, I'll keep you abreast of everything. Just echo on, on what the mayor said about the Christmas parade. I'm part of that committee and we're looking at it and decisions will be made sometime tomorrow. So everybody watch your social media out there. Mr. Lucas, welcome. I didn't know that's who you were when I greeted you back there, but welcome to the city. And thank you to all our staff each and every day for all our workers out there. Departments are just doing great work. I see them each and every day. And also, department heads remind them that they see some crazy guy waving. That's me. I try to do it every time. I get a smile every once in a while from them anyways, but thank you and God bless everyone.
Mr. Walls?
Yeah, I want to thank Parks and Rec and all the other departments that are involved in the Christmas celebrations, setting up decorations. I've lived, born here, raised here, and it feels good when I see those decorations come up and reminds me of when I'm a little kid. So gets me wanting to spend a little money. So thank you all for, for doing that. Thank you to Chief on sending your, your crew to learn new techniques and always improving and educating. I was really encouraged when I heard him say that the new techniques that they're learning will help not only the officers, but the person that they're trying to restrain, you know, keeping them from being injured. So thank you for not just staying where you're at, but improving our, our police force. So thank you. And thank you to our engineering department. And it's, it's really heartening to hear all the work that they do to try to make sure that those homes that need remediation, that they work with them so hard to try to get those homes back where they need to be. And I appreciate that. And the ones that, that don't want to work with the city, I'm thankful that the city's moving to take care of those homes. So thank you for your hard work there. So that's it. Merry Christmas to everybody and hope to see you all at a tree lady.
Okay, well, I'm just going to say ditto because everything I had planned to say would be redundant at this point. Thank all of you for giving up your lunchtime to come hang out with us. And looking forward to the continuation of this Christmas season as we move forward through all the celebrations. And this meeting is adjourned until December 16th, 5 o'clock, I believe. All right, this meeting is adjourned.